Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this July 11th, 2023, meeting of the Pierce County Council in Tuesday's study session. The time is 12:03 PM. All members are present except for council members Denson and Kruber.
Kruber's online.
Excuse me. Customer Kruber is online, so customer Denson is excused. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Mr. Cox?
Yes, Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. With the chair's permission, I will just touch on the changes from yesterday's.
That would be great.
All right. The, there is one new item on the agenda, messages from executive judges, a prosecuting attorney. It's a message from the executive transmitting ordinance, number 202316, which was, which grants now exclusive franchise to the town of Eatonville. And this was signed by the executive. And I will point out that Hugh Taylor has two amendments to discuss. One for R 2023 101, I believe, and another for R 2023 106. And that is our agenda for today, this afternoon's meeting at three o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Before we get to the amendments on our, that have been introduced already for today's consideration, are there any questions about today's council meeting agenda? I will remind members that it will be my practice to pause at the time of the consent agenda to first ask if any member wishes to move any item off of the consent agenda. And we'll then ask for a motion from the vice chair to move the consent agenda. And then we will take public comment on the consent agenda. And the public comment must be focused on final action items, not, so that is not action, that is not for items for scheduling and introduction or minutes, but only for final action items. That is a new practice with our updated council rules of procedure. Vice Chair Campbell.
So, how are we handling them?
My recommendation is the vice chair. If, if there is a member of the public, an appointee present, that we move it to section seven still, or excuse me, section nine would be my recommendation, so we can have dialogue with them.
Okay.
Because.
There was room now on consent for public comment, but that's.
But it does not allow for time for remarks. We will not be asking for remarks from, from council members to appreciate their service or ask them questions.
And the other, I think, habit we need to get in with Tuesday's study session is who will be leading the land acknowledgement pledge at that evening's meeting. So that we're, whoever's doing it can be perhaps prepared.
Thank you for that. This week, I'll be calling on customer Herrera to lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge allegiance. Have a handy, any little list? So please move, move down the dais. Thank you for that. Any other questions before we get to amendments? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. As Mr. Cox indicated, there are two amendments in your package, our packet. The first is an amendment to R 2023 101. This is the proposal that identifies street lighting, traffic calming, and neighborhood safety projects per proviso in the 2022-2023 budget. The amendment that's in your packet would add three projects to the dis, to the list. These projects would be located in districts three, five, and seven. Projects are spelled out in the amendment memo. They include one street light at 176 Street South. For those that think about 176 Street, 176 Street South is a small roadway that runs parallel to the segment that's called the Cross Space Highway. There's a cul-de-sac there that, there's been some concern about criminal activity and the council members asked for a light at that location. Addition of a, see, there's an error in the amendment memo. We'll get that corrected. But item two within the amendment memo would add a speed study on Waller Road. There's a segment identified for possible speed reduction. And then what is supposed to be item three listed as item one in the amendment memo is a revision to a project description for District Seven on Goodman Drive Northwest. We'll get the memo corrected before council today. So that's that amendment. I paused to see if there's any questions on that item.
Are there questions about council amendment number one to resolution 2023-101 for final consideration today?
Maybe I need to make my own recommendation for District One. I feel left out.
I think you're in the underlying.
There are projects in the, in the resolution, definitely for District One. This is some additions to the project list, so.
For the record, customer Denson has joined us at the beginning of our discussion here about today's council meeting agenda. Excuse me, council member Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to point out that I wouldn't consider mine in District Seven in addition. It was, it was an adjustment. We had asked for a speed study and then upon additional conversation, it wasn't going to effectuate anything. So we decided to just change that to a couple of speed monitoring signs. So same area, we just kind of actually more limited the request. Thank you.
Customer Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that this particular cul-de-sac is also a favorite dumping ground for those who dump. So I thought, and it was one that we had discussed about having in there, but the communication did not get to Hugh in time. So that's why that addition. Thank you.
Thank you for that context. We hope you're feeling better. Mr. Taylor, I think we're ready to talk about council amendment number one to resolution 2023 106.
All right. Thank you. So resolution 2023 106 is the resolution that states the council's budget priorities for the 24-25 biennium. Also includes text regarding potential reallocation of ARPA funds or American Rescue Plan Act funds, if necessary. At the Rules and Operations Committee meeting yesterday, there was discussion about adding language that indicates council's continued support of the ARPA allocations that are set forth in the 2022-2023 budget. And it's hope that those allocations be put to use as intended. So the amendment before you adds two items related to ARPA. The first item added is in regard to requested reports from the executive. Report request is added that asks the executive to report out to the council when he submits his 24-25 budget, any ARPA reallocations relative to the 2022-2023 budget that are proposed. And so if there are any, you know, unallocated funds or funds where the county, ARPA funds where the county does not believe that it can fulfill the intent in the 22-23 budget, executive is asked to report out on those. What funding changes are proposed, the amount of funds changed, the reasons for the proposed reallocation. Item two in the council's priorities list adds, adds language to the ARPA reallocation priorities to state the council's continued support of the 2022-2023 allocations. And that's what the amendment memo does. Again, it's responsive to the dialogue that happened at Rules and Operations Committee yesterday. Perhaps the sponsor wishes to have more information.
Thank you for these clarifications and these additions. I think this gets more clearly to council's intent for request here. Thank you, customer kitchen for working on these refinements.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And Mr. Taylor for drafting. Are there questions about council amendment number one to resolution 2023 106? Council member Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Just had a question on some of the priorities, or one of them, the youth and young adult paid employment programs. What kind of example of that would be?
The best example, I think, is the paid internship program run in partnership with our Economic Development Department, led by Workforce Central and many, many private employers in Pierce County. Workforce Central was the lead agent that did a lot of the coordination. And customer, excuse me, vice chair Campbell, would you be in a position to speak a little bit more to some of the details that are escaping me at the moment?
I can, and I think we had the briefing on it. Were you here when Workforce Central came and presented on it? So it'd be a continuation of that, one of our most successful programs we had, I think, during the pandemic of use of ARPA funds to both support our employers and provide job opportunities for those who need it. And so it's a proven successful program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking, customer Herrera. I think if you, if you haven't done so, if you haven't had the opportunity yet, hearing more from Workforce Central in the future, if you get a moment, eating into our biennial budget discussions later this fall, I think you would find it really interesting. Any other questions about today's council meeting agenda? Okay, not seeing any. We're going to move us to external boards and commissions reports on external boards and commissions. I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to begin the discussion.
Thank you. Just one item to report out for PSRC or the Puget Sound Regional Council this week, and that's the Transportation Policy Board. It meets this Thursday, July 13th. There aren't any action items on their agenda, but there are a number of discussion items that I think are of interest to the council. These discussion items include a debriefing on the Regional Safety Summit, an update on the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program. So as a reminder, the county has been awarded funds for its Vision Zero effort through that program. An update on the Equity Advisory Committee. They're going to discuss a summer planning academy that PSRC will be hosting. And then lastly, discussion about the plan review process. So this is the process that's utilized to review local comprehensive plans for consistency with, with vision and the regional transportation plan. And that's what's on the PSRC Transportation Policy Board agenda this week, and that's all that I have to report out on today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do any other members have updates on external boards and commissions you serve on on behalf of Pierce County? I will note that Vice Chair Campbell and I participated in the Pierce Transit Board meeting yesterday. Several agenda items. One of them was the board's ability to recognize Vice Chair Campbell's leadership as chair for the last two years of the Pierce Transit Board. So thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, for that.
They were very excited to have, to give me a going away.
Yeah, be careful. You got a gavel.
Put him on a bus.
We had a very important study session ahead of the meeting that focused on the progress of the Bus Rapid Transit project and how that project is going. Its continued factors related to planning and implementation of Bus Rapid Transit on the Pacific Avenue Highway seven corridor and what options are available to the agency to move the project forward in light of continued cost escalation and requirements by local governments and state government. The continued mitigation that keeps getting piled on to the project that continues to escalate the cost of the project. Um, so the board is in serious engagement about what the path forward is to bring a semblance of a high-capacity transit corridor project to this very growing corridor. The board also took action to purchase 15, one five, 15 new 40-foot compressed natural gas buses, gave authorization to do some other equipment purchases, but that, that was. Vice Chair Campbell.
Give me the number.
Ten?
Last, I have ten. It's more than that, wasn't it?
Ten? Oh, ten and fifteen Model Y.
So yeah, Pierce Transit is that 25 Model Y Teslas to their fleet for their supervisor vehicles and as part of their van pool network, seven-passenger Model Ys. They went out and did research and determined that that's the best path forward to quickly and get them into stock. And so we will be doing assessments over the next several months and years as to how effective that is. But 25 Model Y Tesla's being added to their fleet.
Thank you. Any other external boards or commission updates? Not seeing any. So that brings us to chair's topics. I will briefly indicate, as I stall for Mr. Taylor, who's needed for the other business item. I, I will briefly, but importantly, update council that Mr. Taylor and Ms. Long and I have been working very hard on the preparation for our new chief of staff who starts next Monday. So we are very excited to welcome Ms. Julie Murray to our team to lead our staff team. There's a very extensive and thoughtful checklist that we, we have the base checklist that we have from the county's Human Resources Department that is very helpful. We've amended it quite a bit for application to our office. Mr. Taylor has been taking point on this for us and has been doing an excellent job. I think we have a very, very thoughtful onboarding process lined up for Ms. Murray when she walks into the doors for the first time to work at eight fifteen in the morning on Monday, July 17. So there, there's a, there's a card at the reception, a welcome card at the reception. Encourage all of our staff and all members to sign that. There'll be a welcome gift, a modest welcome gift to welcome her. And like I said, I think we have a very thoughtful onboarding, onboarding to our office, onboarding to the county operations holistically. That is very well thought through and a number of meetings with key players already lined up. So a lot of efforts going into that and my deep gratitude to Mr. Taylor for helping me manage that on behalf of the county council. Item number five is other business. Mr. Taylor, I'm going to turn to you to begin the discussion about state government affairs in particular. And one of, we're here to update council on where we are with state government affairs and in particular, receive concurrence from council to give a short-term contract extension is the main thought here, but we have some important background to give to prepare this discussion, Mr. Taylor.
All right. Thank you. So what staff wanted to do today is just a quick refresher on the government affairs contracts for both the state and federal government affairs. And then we've presented similar information in the past. The reason it's being presented today, as the chair notes, is there's a proposed short-term extension of the state government affairs contract. And then there is the proposed re-advertising of both contracts for a new request for proposal, because I want to talk about that. So as a reminder, there are two contracts. State Government Affairs Services are provided by Shaw Government Relations and then Federal Government Affairs Services are provided by Gordon Thomas Honeywell. So the slide behind me gives the specifics on both of those contracts. You'll see that the contracts for state government affairs was originally entered into September 2018. The federal contract was entered into January 2019. Both contracts contain provisions for annual renewals, one year at a time for up to five years. On both contracts, the county is in the fifth year. So consistent with our prior practices and consistent with the information presented in the request for proposals when they were advertised, the county will go out for a new process. So essentially give an opportunity for contractors to bid for the work through a new request for proposal process. In order to bridge the remainder of the year and to align the state and federal contract terms, there's a proposed short extension of the state contract, possibly four months. This will allow the, the terms of both contracts to align with one another in the future to just ease with the management of the contract. If you go to, go ahead, Jair, move to the next slide, please. I would appreciate it. So I'm not going to go through everything in this slide. It's, it's there just for a refresher. It's a snapshot of the current structure of government affairs in the, in the county. It explains the county council's role and responsibilities, the executive's offices' role and responsibilities, and then the services that are provided by the contractors. There's information on the process, how information's conveyed to the council, which staff are involved and what their responsibilities are. So I'd be happy to answer questions about this, but it's just, there is a refresher for the members. Go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So as I stated earlier, both of the contracts are in their fifth and final year. They're proposed to be re-advertised through a new request for proposals process in the fall. We're going to align, the county's looking to align the contract terms to simplify administration. There is a four-month contract extension that's proposed for the state contract. Consistent with the prior process, and this is what, I guess the chair would be looking for and staff would be looking for some feedback on this potentially, is prior RFP processes were jointly administered by the executive and the council. Council representation in those prior processes has been to the chair. So the council and the, or the chair of the council and the executive's office worked jointly to develop the RFP to have the RFP advertised, to evaluate proposals received through that RFP process, score the contractors, and ultimately make a recommendation on a selection for a contractor. That's what I expect would happen this next round as well. But if there's any feedback that the members have on that process, this might be a good opportunity to provide that feedback. In your packet, I've included the scope of work for both contracts. So the state and federal contracts outlines what each of the contractors is responsible for doing. This is an opportunity for you to provide feedback on that as well. If the scope of services provided meets the needs of the council, if there's any feedback on the scope of services, staff would be receptive. Obviously not today. You have to have time to go through and review it, but it's in your packet. And so we would be open to any feedback that you have in the coming weeks regarding the scope of services provided. That's it. Wanted to be quick on this, and I'll just stand by for questions. And I see Ms. McDaniel says in the chamber as well. Who could probably help answer questions also if you have them. And I'll pause at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDaniel, on behalf of the county executive, do you have anything to add?
Good afternoon. Alice McDaniel, staff to the executive. Nothing further to add to what Mr. Taylor's already briefed on. Information I would have shared with you and look forward to feedback or questions as you have them.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments about anything at all related to these two contracts? And also looking for any objection to entering into a four-month extension of the contract so that they can align together and we can keep with some contract services and not go without them for, for that interim period. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. No objections, but I just wanted to clarify, the goal of the cycle is to align contract terms to simplify administration. I just wanted to know, simplify our administration of the contracts? Like, what are we simplifying?
So currently, when we do extensions, for instance, because of the state contract has an August 31 expiration date, the federal contract has a December 31 expiration date. We're doing extensions at different times. We're tracking different deadline dates. This aligns everything to a single date. Both contracts would have the same expiration dates. When we're looking at extensions, we would do a single action where we would extend both contracts at the same time. Monitoring, we would be looking at the same end date when we have to do, when it's time to do a new request for proposal process. That would happen at the same time for both the state and federal. That's what's meant by simplifying administration. Doesn't necessarily remove steps. It did, just aligns dates.
Okay, for both, for both.
Yeah, for both.
Versions. And then as far as the process, our county continues to grow. Is, have we looked at, or is part of this thinking going to be looking at, is this the best model for our county? Is that part of the thinking in what we're looking at?
So as was covered, I think, in the, one of the retreats that you had regarding your priorities, the possibility of re-establishing a office of government affairs or a, or a full-time staff position, similar to what existed prior to 2018, has been discussed. Obviously, council action would be needed in that regard, both budget and county code to establish that, that office. So discussion amongst the members is needed to, to arrive at a decision on that in the executive's office. Obviously, government affairs and county government involves multiple branches. And so there has to be communication and dialogue across the branches for it to be successful. Within your packet is a slide that shows the 20, the pre-2018 government affair structure. Again, just as a reminder, I anticipated this question might come up. It's there just to show you what, what government first look like before 2018, when we had a specific office for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I want to just also note that it's not, since we're talking about government affairs, I wanted to note that I have asked Mr. Taylor to, for federal government affairs. We, you know, we've had this practice during session. We get regular weekly updates from Mr. Michael Shaw, who's our current contractor. We see him weekly, if not more often, during the legislative session. And then, of course, some wrap-up work. He certainly does a lot of work that we don't see right behind the scenes, working behind the scenes to prepare for the next session or wrapping up the current session, meeting with members of the legislature. We don't necessarily see all that. There's a lot that is happening without our knowledge. Thank goodness. Um, what I'm getting to is on the federal government side, we don't see our, physically see our lobbyist as often on the other, on the other coast. He too is working very hard on our behalf and doing a lot of behind-the-scenes coordination that we don't necessarily see ourselves, but we are the benefit of. Um, I have asked Mr. Taylor to work to set up quarterly briefings with our federal government affairs officer so that he can, Mr. Dale Lern, can participate, especially taking advantage of Zoom technology, can participate on a quarterly basis, more as needed, but a quarterly basis to keep us in good communication about his efforts on the county's behalf in the other Washington. So, Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, and thank you for that reminder. We do have scheduled for August 21st, Mr. Learn to be present at council to provide an update on, on federal affairs. So about a month and a half from now.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any objections to the short-term contract extension so that they can be aligned and the county can go through its procurement process to procure the next contract for these services, which may include these two firms being the winning bidders. They, they could choose to rebid and, and be, perhaps be the successful bidder, but we'll go through our normal procurement process. Okay, nothing else here. Thank you for that. Council members, is there any other business by council members today? We do have a closed session on our calendar today.
Mr. Chair, if I could add something regarding closed session, I have just literally in the last minute received a request from HR indicating that they will not be able to be present in person. They're asking for the meeting to occur virtually, which logistically we can do. But since it's very much separate from the Tuesday study session, right? I'll need to send out Zoom link for that meeting to all the members as well. We have the Zoom meetings set up as a standby in case it was needed. We can do that. But I'll need, it'll take a minute or two to facilitate all that after you adjourn TSS. Okay, Mr. Chair.
So why don't we get together at 12:45?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll be back in our offices to participate in a closed session at 12:45 for the, for the purposes of labor negotiations.
And we'll watch our email for a link to come in.
Yes, there's, is that enough time, Mr. Taylor?
There should be a Zoom link in the meeting invite on your calendar.
Yeah, we've, we've prepared in case this happened, but.
Okay. There's a closed session on our calendars. Is that the link that we should use? Okay, there is a closed session link. And let's begin, let's begin that session at 12:00. Okay, there is a closed session link, and let's begin, let's begin that session at twelve forty-five.
All right.
Give members fifteen minutes to do what they need to do. We are adjourned.